I have two questions on this slide. Under where it says the supervisor's office, could I have the titles of those three positions, the 3.5?
Basically Al.
Well, yeah, I just want the title.
Transportation.
Yeah.
Two, Assistant Director of Transportation. And then a clerical position.
Okay. And at .5 clerical?
Yes, .5, yep.
Okay. And then the dispatcher trainer, or the titles of those, the 2.5?
Dispatcher and a single trainer, a head trainer, and then a halftime dispatcher. Those are the actual titles.
So it's like a 1.5 dispatcher?
Yes, 1.5 dispatcher and 1.0 trainer.
Thank you.
That's actual FTEs as opposed to the others that were positioned.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, Lynn?
This is probably is better for Al. I mean, we've made, I don't know how to do this, we've made a lot of cuts the last couple of years and I think it's probably a good time to kind of evaluate how that has affected the department. I'm going to ask this for other departments, too. And how have the cuts affected you?
Well, obviously, there's a reduction in service. A handful, like 300 some odd kids are walking further, so had an effect on students. Internally, in the department, as you know, we had to give up the head mechanics position or assistant fleet maintenance supervisor's position. That job had to be absorbed by someone in the department with the skill sets, and that's me, unfortunately. So what that does is it takes away my focus from other areas and it puts the burden on my two assistants to try to pick up some of that slack. I'm not as able to get out and go to the schools like I usually do. Just an example, I'm not able to get out and inspect what I expect of my drivers out on the road because the fleet maintenance supervisor's office or duties really take about 70% of my time right now. So that's the kind of effect it's had on it, but you know, we're making it, we're making it happen each and every day.
Thank you.
If I can help Al out a little, the financial times have been very difficult and Al certainly pulled the weight as well as his entire department. Like in the state of the schools, as we try to address things in the future, that would be certainly something that would have, as we start to strengthen ourself, a need to be looked at. That's probably been the biggest impact. I would say in regards to the transportation shift, that's generally in place now for well over a year and has run very well on behalf of all the department, the drivers, Al, as well as our community, as I've noted before. We do have some slight problems here and there of whether or not there's agreement between some community as well as the transportation department, but we try to make sure that we level that as equally and fairly and justly across the entire district according to the standards that the department has put in place, and we think we are doing that correctly.
Just a general comment, I think, I think your department is the one that's gotten it right in the last few years because I think you made a major overhaul that had a major impact on the budget without, and it had an impact on people, but I don't think as negative as it did positive. And I'm definitely the glass half-empty person here, but the task ahead of us is daunting, definitely. And the dam that's leaking has had fingers stuck in the holes for the past few years and it's gonna blow at some point. And I'm not convinced, because I wear a hat other than education, that the GEA is the answer. I really am not because even if you got all of that back, and I'm not saying don't fight for it, but if it takes away from healthcare and bridges and ambulance, I don't know where the money's coming from. That's the thing, I can't fight because I don't know where it's coming from. And you know, yes, there's a surplus and I don't understand giving back when there's a surplus, but it takes one hurricane and the surplus is gone. I mean, honestly, so budgeting these things is impossible, but even if we got it all back, you'd raise taxes 2.5% just to stay status quo. And staying status quo of raising taxes 2% to 3% every year, I take a third grader. And the reason I take a third grader, I think it's symbolic because there's organizations that are asking for the Common Core standards for graduation not to be held accountable until those kids graduate. So you take that length of time, which I think is absurd, but you take that kid and you put that kid through school and you have that kid stay in Bethlehem and you have that kid raise the family and their kid is now graduating. So put them at 48 years old, their taxes double in that period of 40 years. The majority of taxpayers are not in a position that their incomes are anywhere near going to double. So if you're on a pension, don't have a pension, you're a doctor, you're a lawyer, you're whatever, you haven't seen a raise in years, you're on minimum wage, how are you possibly going to pay double the taxes? And that's the road that we're on right now. And I think almost every department has to be overhauled the way that yours was to get off of that track right now. Because I can't live here in 25 years, as much as I'm paying in taxes and I do okay money-wise, and I can't live here in 25 years. And I don't see where we're getting off that track. I mean, I don't, I think it was the New York Times ran an article recently on fundraising burnout. And we are relying not only on GEA and the tax increase, but on a lot of fundraising to keep the programs we have. Sports gets a lot of the money, you got a new piano from a various generous donor, the music department gets their summer program paid by donations, field trips are being paid by donations, and that's going to blow up, too, because people are getting sick of it, of being asked, and they're saying, "Don't rely on that in the future because people aren't going to continue at the rate that they're doing right now." And so I just think everything's headed in the wrong direction. And I don't think you can slow it down this year, but you gotta start putting the brakes on and start doing major overhauls and not just line items. I mean, you could have cut a couple buses, you put off the thing, but until you revamped the whole system, we didn't see any major thing. And that was the one major thing that we were like, "Thank God." I mean, we kept a lot of programs because you did that. And I know you got a lot of flack and I know you had to come to meetings and people were ticked off that their kids had to walk distances and stuff, but you did it and you pushed through it and it helped the district a lot. And I know by next week, you're not going to have a major overhaul of things, but I think that's where we need to be going in this because this is incredibly daunting. And a third grader is not going to have the education that a kid in high school that you guys have, at all. You get rid of sports, then three years later, you get rid of music, and three years later, you get rid of art, and three years later, you don't have AP. And you know, five years later, if you got any money, your kid's not going to Bethlehem. I mean, that's where we're headed that I see, and I don't like it. And I just don't see the answers yet. And I know you're going to do that over the next couple of weeks, but not only light on it for this year, I would like to see where we're going and how you're slowing that down. Because 2% doesn't sound that bad, but 2% over half your life is a huge amount at the end. And you know, when you say the governor's, you know, enticing everybody to take a tax rate, a lot of people are going to jump on that because getting a couple thousand dollars back this year doesn't sound so bad to me, like honestly. And so I think you're going to have a lot of people jumping on that, even when it hurts us in the future. And I would hope the discussion is not just this year, but how are we slowing this down to change it?
Well, I think, Dr. Navarro, one of the big things is that's part of the state of the school address. We have been doing more with less. Sooner or later, this board, this, and most importantly, this community is going to have to decide, are they willing to do less with less? And right now, every time we go to a budget presentation, they come out in droves saying, "No." That's going to be the hard part. The question is, when we do budgets, we give that long-range forecast. It's like last year at the end of the budget, we were saying, "In order to show some sustainable budgeting, we have to eventually reduce the fund balance." Well, we've had enough of the cuts and reductions last year, but now, a year later, we're back at it. I would say, you're absolutely correct. The restoration of the gap elimination is not the panacea end-all-be-all. It's a temporary Band-Aid to a greater fix that unfortunately, the board, the community has no control in. Property taxes in New York State should not be used to supplement a constitutional requirement by our government and by our state, but the state is saying, "Oh, we have this requirement, but we're going to say the locals must pay for it." That's the problem. We are not in the driver's seat there, so we are trying to manage the ship as best we can with the fuel that we're given, so to speak. So I agree. I mean, the transportation was a big thing, why we're trying to address food service. Sooner or later, it's going to be, what is our educational program? And remember, in New York State, the only program that we have to offer is a basic education. The question is, does Bethlehem stand for that?
Anyone else, any questions for Al, comments? All right, thank you, Al.
All right, thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Judy, can you exit? I can't see, there it is, over there somewhere.
X.
That little transparent end show, you can't see very well.
The next agenda item is item number seven. It is, at this time, the board would recognize any visitors in the audience who would like to speak or address the board on an agenda item. If you could come up front and state your name, please. Forgot to mention before, we're being videotaped, it's broadcast on Sunday evenings.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mario Cametti and-
You can take that out.
Yeah, it's easier that way. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on some issues regarding transportation and actually follow-up on comments made by you, Ms. Lenhart, and Dr. Navarro. I understand that there, one of the budgetary concerns has affected the transportation system, and it sounds like Mr. Karam has made, done an outstanding job of trying to address that gap, but I'm wondering if the board has taken into consideration that these budget decisions, these cuts can occur in a vacuum without taking into consideration safety concerns. And the reason why I'm up here is because I can show you a concrete example of where it's affected possibly my family directly. I have a nine-year-old who on an occasion last year mistakenly got on the wrong bus and that was overlooked, and she was dropped off at her home at a time when no one was there. And so there was two mistakes, her getting on the bus and being dropped off at her home completely alone. And it just was so fortuitous that the front door was open and she called her mother hysterical and a disaster was avoided. But since then, there's been other incidents, and I'm not talking about inconveniences. I understand that there's been a change in the system, that now there are these community stops, and I understand that parents shouldn't discomplain about inconveniences such as additional walking to the bus stop. I'm talking about potential disasters that could negate all the good that's done by the budgetary cuts. For example, in my particular daughter's situation, she has to cross the street in order to get to one of these community stops as opposed to the bus stop at her, near the vicinity of her house or at her location. And just last week, and this is why I'm here, a car had recklessly passed the bus and my daughter came home that day and said, "Oh, I was almost hit by a car." And we understood that this was actually confirmed by the bus driver and it was called in. So what I'm here to ask of the board is that there, you know, some questions about how the, whether there's enough transparency in terms of the decision-making with regard to the bus routes and not in the actual community stops, and whether there's a process that the school district undertakes to ensure that these community stops during the course of the year are constantly evaluated and there's some assurances that they are actually the best-as applied. Because obviously, I would assume that each year, there's a decision-making process and there's a constant state of change as to where these stops are and when they occur. And I actually dealt directly with Ms. Keough and Mr. Karam with the incident I told you about last year, and I thought that their responsiveness was great. I mean, they took responsibility, they didn't try to poo-poo it, they recognized the seriousness. But my concern is whether the board is asking too much of him and of the district when it's making these cuts with regard to transportation because unlike other areas of the budget, for example, not to in any way diminish the importance of libraries, but if we're without one book or two, no one's not going to lose their life. But with regard to transportation, if Mr. Karam, as he indicated just a moment ago, that he hasn't, doesn't feel like he has the capability to inspect and follow up necessarily as much as he would like to with regard to how his staff and the bus drivers are implementing the rules he asks, maybe that's something that we shouldn't accept. Maybe that's something that he shouldn't have to worry about. Maybe there should be some consideration as to whether there's enough money that he needs in order to make sure that there's safety because that one incident that I told you about with regard to my daughter could have been life-threatening. Can you imagine if she was left out today, for example, where she was left in a cul-de-sac on a day where it's below freezing, she could have died. And thankfully, that didn't happen. And I, I'm not here to point fingers or blame anyone, I'm just here so that no other parent down the road comes and has this disastrous story to tell you. And I just, again, I'm asking that whether we are, can be assured that there's feedback from bus drivers, like when there is an incident, could parents, are parents notified? For example, that one incident where my daughter just happened to notify us that she was almost hit by a car. Whether there's a process in place to make sure that those types of incidents are reported to Mr. Karam so he can make adjustments if need be and that sort of thing, or that parents can be notified so that they can make sure that their children are safely brought to the bus, to the bus stop. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me, and I just wanted to call it to your attention, especially in light of these budgetary concerns.
Thank you for your comments. I know that safety is number one with the district and with Mr. Karam. We always take safety issues into consideration. I know there is a process where with the stops, if someone has a concern about it, it's evaluated and whatnot by the administration, but thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the audience have anything to say about an agenda item?
Item number, finance. Finance, item number eight. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
Some of them.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number nine, professional personnel. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through L.
Some of them.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Action item number 10, support personnel, and I believe there's a change on the support personnel.
Item I.
Item I is-
The effective date should be January 27.
Okay. Did everybody hear that? The effective date is January 27. Okay. So, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through L with the modification of I as noted.
In fact, I note that the agenda was already modified by the district clerk, so-
Oh, it is, okay. So we're good. Good. Great.
Thank you.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 11, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A through B.
Some of them.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Clarify the lab school trip, that they fundraise for that.
Yeah, this is funded through the labs.
And I'll just add that if, for some reason, I know that I think Costa Rica's probably the safest country in Central America, but again, things can happen, things can change that if there were some-
We would advise them to take trip insurance, especially.
There.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 12, at this time, we would recognize anyone from the audience that has anything, a comment to make to the board regarding a non-agenda item? Being none, we'll move on. Item number 13.
Karen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got to move quick, Karen.
My apologies, truly.
That's all right. Speaking of moving quick, I want to invite all of you to come to the March Madness event. So mad it's happening on February 28th. A lot of you will be there, I know, suited up, people in the back, people in the front. This year's a little different because of the wacky Olympics, so there's things like scooter races and parachute launching and all kinds of fun stuff. Rumor has it, there's a flash mob, the hooligans are going to be there again this year. It's going to be great. The doors open at 5:30 and we hope to see everyone there.
Definitely. Thank you, Karen.
I've even seen a very nice ice skating picture of our members of our teaching staff, Mr. Rounds being included and Ms. Waimer.
That looked good, the ice.
It looked very good, so.
Now, before you close the meeting, I just have a question.
Yeah.
We, there was some initial discussion on how to solicit community feedback on the budget process in addition to board meetings. Where would the board have a discussion on that, or when?
You would have it here.
And I think you're referencing, we had gotten an email from a resident suggesting possibly a survey.
Surveying or rank ordering. I know it's getting late, but can you-
No, well, that's what our job is, and if it takes us a while.
I would favor some kind of a survey instrument, short, maybe five questions. And in general, I'm not sure what the questions would be, I don't know if we have to brainstorm them, but since we're not having community forums and not everyone can make budget meetings or board event meetings, I'd like a way of somehow getting the pulse of whoever decides to fill out the survey, a larger number of folks. So I would propose a survey, not necessarily rank ordering priorities, but somehow asking the community some pertinent questions about the budget process. I want to throw that out there.
Does anyone have comments, hon?
I'm not opposed to doing it, but we would need to make sure that it's set up in such a way that people can repeatedly fill out the survey. You know, you can sometimes restrict it, so you can only do it from a certain email address one time because otherwise, you run the risk of stuffing the ballot box, as it were, and then you have suspect results. But if we could be sure that we get discrete results, then I have no objection to it.
I think it has to be carefully worded, though. I don't think it can be like our list and say, "What order do you want?" I don't think we can do that, but maybe just, you know, what people would consider their priorities. And, you know, again, a carefully worded-
My suggestion is, I can't really speak for the board, that if you want a survey for yourself, that you would really have to sit down and try to craft it, but I would caution not to exclude anybody, but that's what board meetings, not more, I mean, we have two a month, that that's what the board meetings are for as well as email. I mean, we hear it certainly when the board makes any type of decision. It's kind of hard to do something like that when we haven't presented the budget and then ask priorities. So I would caution a little because you really couldn't put it out until after the whole budget's presented. And when the whole budget's presented around April 2nd, you may have to act quickly and so forth. So you would probably have from now until then to be able to decide what the board would like to ask, but I'd be very careful on how you ask or what you ask.
I think it's very difficult, but with so much, I mean, there's so many opportunities for people to actually provide input. I mean, we ultimately have to, are the decision-makers, we have to make those tough decisions, but I think there's plenty of time for people to actually provide input. I mean, they can see the, see the board meetings on TV or on the website and respond by email or whatever to us, you know, to let us know how they feel about different issues. I mean, people have never refrained from doing that.
And you got, I think you'd have to be careful, too, of not getting a biased feedback in terms of the type of people that may answer a survey versus those that may not answer any survey, and we really wouldn't be hearing from those that don't answer surveys and to make decisions based on that.
Even individually, you hear from different people. I mean, you know, those of you who have children in school certainly hear from other parents, you know, in their age groups, probably quite a bit. And then those of us that suddenly probably represent more the senior citizens of the community, or at least the citizens that don't have children in school, you know, hear other viewpoints, too. And, you know, that all helps in our decision-making.
And I think balancing on Matt's statement, like we have to be careful to not bring in sort of a one-sided discussion from like surveys. The board also balances one-sided discussions even here at the board meeting because we all know, we hear support or against something here, but that doesn't mean we've heard what actually the real consensus is out there. So, no, I'm not against it, it's just it's one of those very difficult avenues of trying to balance, and the board would have to establish the committee to develop that survey.
Yeah, Joe?
I think public input is always good. I think you could design a simple survey using a simple survey tool, there's a million of them out there. You can do three questions, five questions, you can definitely control it. You could ask for people's names, you could, you know, do a lot of things to make sure that you were getting legitimate responses. I mean, I think input, whatever kind is good, you know, people sending the emails to the board are sometimes very interesting, but you know, it's input that we can evaluate. I don't necessarily think that we should worry about, you know, assuming too much. I mean, it's a data input that we can evaluate like we can any other data input, whether it's people standing up and speaking or emails or anything else. I mean, I tend to think, you know, any kind of input you get that's more organized like that, and especially if you're not doing forums, you know, would be a good idea. And if we did do a committee, I'd be happy to lend, you know, I've worked on a lot of surveys for my organization, but I think you'd want to keep it really crisp and small and controlled.
Diane, do you have any-
Well, I would just be wondering, like, what we're going to be asking, because we don't know at this point, so we haven't seen what administration has come up with, what are we going to be asking for, what kind of input?
No, I think that's a valid point. I think timing is probably a bigger critical issue to figure out, maybe with Tom and, you know, look at the calendar and figure out whether there's a window that kind of makes sense for public input using that venue.
I would also go back to past public forums as a starting point. What did we ask before in a large public setting would be the, be the first place I would look for more general questions, maybe. I can't remember what they were, but I know we used to have two or three public forums each budget season, we're not having any this year, so.
Right, but Chairman, the reason we had them was at the beginning of when we were going to, when we were facing the fiscal crisis, basically, and looking at where we were going to have to make cuts, so it was really introducing the community to that. We had never experienced that before, and a lot of that was just informing the community of what was happening around us in the state and also how we were going to possibly, you know, make decisions accordingly. So a lot of that was a learning process, having those forums.
You know, it's just even like if you, you know, not to flood the emails, but just a simple thing on S and N, please, you know, it doesn't have to be a survey, but please let the board know what you're thinking with budget coming, just so you're asking-
You don't have to respond to those emails.
Be careful what you wish for.
I mean, that is one way-
No, we always welcome emails. I'm joking about that. We truly do welcome emails.
Yeah, we're not, we're just going to be looking, we're not going to responding. So you're not responding to the 100 emails I had to respond to last year.
Tanny's already getting ready to type.
But, you know, just something as simple as that, you know, just kind of put the S and N, we want, we want your opinions, we want to know what you're thinking.
Sort of like, if you've seen the recent budget meetings or if you haven't, please go here and please let us know what you're thinking about what you presented yourself.
And I think we need to, I don't think there was an SSN, SNN notifier about tonight's meeting, I think we need to make sure that-
There was.
There was? There was? Oh, I missed it then.
Oh, no, not an SNN, oh, it was on the website, I'm sorry.
No, but I think we need to do that, send that out reminding everybody during this budget process.
Yeah, that's fine, because it's very open-ended, which is hard sometimes to code and summarize because that means you have to read every single one of those comments and then each person, which I don't mind doing. The other thing is to not necessarily just rely on SNNs, because some people aren't on the SNN record. I mean, if I don't have kids in the district, if I'm living over at Delmar Place, I'm not gonna more likely be on SNN. So if we can reach out to community groups, maybe the PTAs can help out. And also, I know we used to have some of the progress club regularly attend, but I'm not sure they do that anymore, but to get into some of the community agencies and say, "Okay, if you have something to offer, something to add, something to say, this is how you do it."
It's like I had the president's organizations that will be meeting next Monday, I'll ask them to reach out so that people are paying attention as well. I know Carol hasn't been here, but I've been to a couple of organizations, I'll contact those people that at least I've talked to recently and say, "What are your thoughts?" Anyone else, anything? Okay. I think we'll, how we end up discussing it again next week as we get into the budget development process and see what type of questions we could ask. Future meetings, next Wednesday, March fifth, we'll be having executive session at 6:00 PM and then the open meeting at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, March nineteenth, another meeting here on the budget, and then Wednesday, April second.
And just so that they know, next, next meeting is about technology, budget, and also our special education program budget.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
That's a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Okay, we are adjourned.
And before 10 o'clock.